I'd like to call out Boot Silver Bow Council Commissioners Regular Meeting for Wednesday, December 1st, 2021 to order. Clerk, will you please have roll call?
We have ten present and two absent.
We have ten present, two absent. Please note that Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Shaw excuse her tonight. Commissioner Sorge, can you do the prayer and the pledge?
Mr. Chief Executive Fellow Commissioners, Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Boot Silver Bow. Director of Thoughts, Words, and Deeds, so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on, we'll go to the approval of amendment November 17th, 2021, regular meeting. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes from the November 17th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yeas, zero nay.
Ten yeas, zero nay, motion passes. We want any items not addressed on the agenda tonight. We do have one. We have a suspension of the rules. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In accordance with the provision of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Business of the Council of Commissioners of City and County of Boot Silver Bow, State of Montana, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow communication 2021-578 to be added to the agenda of the special regular meeting of council. The reason for the suspension is as follows. Communication number 2021-578 is a communication from Chief Water Operator Jim Keenan requesting that the council authorize the chief executive to sign a Montana Department of Natural Resource Council, DNRC, hazardous fuel reduction grant and an accompanying professional service agreement with Grayback Forestry, Inc., to perform a fuels reduction effort on approximately sixteen acres of Boot Silver Bow property adjacent to Basin Creek Reservoir. Although this communication was not submitted prior to the deadline for the December 1st, 2021 meeting, Mr. Keenan is requesting that it be added to the December 1st, 2021 meeting to allow this fuel reduction project to begin as soon as possible in order to protect the city-county's most productive and economical water source. Based upon the foregoing and to allow this matter to be acted upon, the council hereby finds that an emergency exists which requires the suspension of the council's rules to add communication number 2021-578 to the agenda for the December 1st, 2021 regular meeting. I move to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing communication number 2021-578 on the agenda for the December 1st, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move for the suspension of the rules, move this on to tonight's agenda. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yeas, zero nay.
Ten yeas, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to the Chief Executive's report, I'll make this a little short and sweet tonight. You know, lots of things have been moving forward as far as the infrastructure bill was passed. The ARP committee has been kind of setting up the guidelines for the grant funding that we're going to do. We'll be setting a meeting here to meet once, one more time in December to kind of review that and move forward on that matter. There's, you know, lots of retirements within our government. This month, we will have Pat Holland retire, Mayor McCormick will retire, as I said, Chief Doherty, which we approved, Chief Osborne at our last regular meeting, and, you know, just lots of changes in Boot Silver Bow, but we wish everybody the best and thank them for the years of service that they gave to us here at Boot Silver Bow. So I'm going to close that off and we're going to move on to get through the agenda tonight, and we'll move on to any public comment on any items on the agenda tonight. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to have comment on any item on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on unless Kristen wants to come up. We'll move on to Section 1, bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. We have two bid openings tonight. We have communication number 2021-552. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting council commissioners' concurrence for time on the December 1st, 2021, agenda for a bid opening for the 2021 Rhodes Dump Truck. Director Neary.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher.
Mr. Chief Executive, we do have proof of publication for both bid openings, and they both appear to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Thanks for keeping me in order. Director Neary.
Just leave it on. I like to leave them on. Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioners. We have two bids. This one is from I State Truck Center. This is on the dump truck cabin chassis. We actually have two bid openings, but only one bid for each bid. This is from I State Truck Center, Missoula. I don't know if I already said that. I mean, it has me all mixed up.
He did say.
Okay.
Do we have a bid bond?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the total for this is $175,649 even. One seventy-five, six forty-nine.
And we just have one for each one? So we'll move on to communication number 2021-553. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting council commissioners' concurrence for time on the December 1st, 2021, agenda for bid opening for the 2021 Metro Dump Truck, and we've already have proof of publication. Is that correct? Okay. I thought you said that. Okay. Director Neary.
This one is also from I State in Missoula.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, I believe that they wrote cabin chassis on both bids. So the first one would have been for the dump truck.
Okay.
The last one that I read. This one is for the cabin chassis.
Okay.
And it's $117,214. One-one-seven, two-one-four.
That's $117,214, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to ask the Public Works Director to look it over and come back with his recommendation for this council.
Second.
We have Commissioner Anderson.
Just on the question, did you have an engineering estimate or just an estimate or what was allocated in the budget for these two purchases?
Commissioner Anderson, Director Neary.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Anderson, we had $120,000 budgeted for the cabin chassis, and I believe it was $150,000 for the dump truck for Rhodes.
Thank you, Director Neary.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Anything else on the question? The motion should not be in the question. It should be.
Just clarifying that the motion's for both communications.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry about that, County Attorney.
The motion is for communication number 2021-552 and communication 2021-553 to be referred back to Public Works. Could Commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yeas, zero nay.
Ten yeas, zero nay, the motion passes. Moving on to public hearings. Flip my sheet. Okay. First one is communication number 2021-538. Ed Lester, Boot Silver Bow Sheriff, requesting council commissioners' authorization for a public hearing to be conducted on December 1st, 2021 for a budget amendment to increase sheriff budget 2021 for 2021-22 due to unexpected revenue. County Attorney Joyce, we have proof of publication.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication for all three public hearings, and they all appear to be in order.
Thank you. We will have three public hearings tonight, so that's the way for all that. So Sheriff Lester.
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, this is the time set for a public hearing for an amendment to the sheriff's department budget. Unexpected revenue due to JAG Justice Assistance Grant that's been approved for our department to receive to purchase equipment, specifically night vision equipment for our patrol division and some night vision optics for our tactical team rifles.
Thank you, Sheriff Lester. Do Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Sheriff Lester, could you tell me how much that grant was for? It's not in the communication or the letter.
It's, I think it's like $21,600, something a little over $21,000.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you, Sheriff Lester. Any other questions of Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. First, I'll call for proponents. Any proponents in the, in the audience, please come forward to the mic. Second call for proponents. And third and final call for proponents. Seeing no proponents, we'll move on to opponents. First call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents. Close the public hearing. Okay. And so, do we, do I, do we need to take a motion on that? Okay. All right, moving on to the next communication number 2021-540. Ed Randall, Community Enrichment Director, requesting council commissioners' authorization for a public hearing to be conducted on December 1st for comment on amending the 2021-2022 Animal Service Budget. We have proof of publication. We'll have Director Gleason speak on behalf of Director Randall tonight.
Yes. Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioners, this public hearing is to accept and budget $18,100 in the animal control budget. The animal control department has been very successful over the last several months in sinking grant funding, and they received this money from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. It does relate to cats, and so we will be purchasing cat kennels as part of this project.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Any questions of Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. I'll call for proponents. First call for proponents. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, we'll move to opponents. First call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents. We'll close the public hearing. Moving on to public hearing communication number 2021-563. Amy Joyce, Boot Silver Bow County Attorney, requesting council commissioners' authorization for a public hearing to be scheduled for December 1st, 2021 regarding the franchise agreement between the city and county of Boot Silver Bow, Montana and Spectrum, Pacific West, known locally as Charter Communications. County Attorney Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments on a new franchise agreement. Boot Silver Bow currently has a franchise agreement with Charter that is required under the Federal Cable Act, and that was executed in 2001. It was a twenty-year agreement, and the purpose of this franchise agreement is to allow Charter to place their equipment in their, in our right of ways, and Boot Silver Bow receives revenue related to that. And we have been working with a telecommunications attorney to renegotiate the agreement so that we can modernize it, and if we don't have a new agreement negotiated, under the old agreement, Charter is required to give so much notice to the county that it's time to renegotiate, and they did that. And if we don't reach a agreement, the old agreement stays in place on a kind of a month-to-month basis until a new agreement is negotiated. And the purpose of this is, you know, to regulate cable, and you cannot use a federal franchise to regulate internet service. So just wanted to point that out. And so we're asking for a public comment on the agreement that has been submitted to the council.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Any questions of Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. We'll call for proponents. First call for proponents. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, moving on to opponents. First call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents. We'll close the public hearing. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Move to committee reports, A 1 through 4, and communications 1 through 12 with the addition of communication number 2021-578. Commissioner Fredericks, oh, do we have any friendly amendments or segregations?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'd like to segregate communication number 2021-543 out of the Committee of the Whole Report.
That's communication number 2021-543 out of the Committee of the Whole Reports.
And communication number 2021-507 out of the Committee of the Whole Report.
That's communication number 2021-507 out of the Committee of the Whole. Any other friendly amendments or segregations? Seeing none. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to approve Section 2 of the Consent Agenda, A 1 through 4, and B 1 through 12 with the exception, or 1 through 13, sorry, with the exceptions of communication number 2021-543 out of the Committee of the Whole Report, and communication number 2021-507 out of the Committee of the Whole Report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yeas, zero nay.
Ten yeas, zero nay, motion passes. Moving back to, we'll go in order here. Communication number 2021-507. JP Gallagher, Chief Executive, requesting council commissioners' authorization to send this CMS proposal to the Personnel Committee. The proposal for CMS is to provide a pay plan for consulting services. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. As you remembered last week, we placed this on file, and I've been advised that we should cross-reference this with communication number 2021-561, and we placed that one on the, on file. So I move to cross-reference communication 2021-507 with communication 2021-561 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference this to 2021-561. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yeas, zero nay.
Ten yeas, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to communication number 2021-543. JP Gallagher, Chief Executive, requesting council commissioners' authorization for a resolution of intent to be prepared for the purpose of having a ballot issue placed on the June 2022 primary ballot allowing voters to decide on imposition of a local option marijuana excise tax. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We didn't really get a chance. We held this in abeyance last week, and so I just wanted to give the Chief Executive the opportunity to, to talk about it a little bit more since he was absent last week.
Thank you, Commissioner Fredrickson. So this is what the procedure we need to follow to be able to put the marijuana tax to the voters of Boot Silver Bow to decide whether we want. I think Missoula Billings and Park County, I believe, are the ones that have already passed this tax. We are going to, it's my intent that we have the voters vote on both recreational marijuana and medicinal marijuana so that they could choose to do that. I've had some input from people reaching out to me thinking that the medical marijuana should not be taxed, so I think that they'll come up in discussion when we have our public hearings. This is one way that we can tax this, the recreational marijuana, to be able to help with the issues that we have, both mental health and addiction, and things that, that will come from, from the ability for people to purchase this. No different than alcohol, no different than any of the other drugs that we deal with, but it'll give us an opportunity, and this is not going to be a windfall for, for the county, but it will allow us some, some funding that we'll be able to access, to be able to, to maybe provide some positions and, and help support positions that we would need here locally. So with that, any questions? I open up for Commissioners. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. You mentioned that a few counties, park, billings, both have already passed this. Has it gone to a vote of the citizenry over there, or is it something that their council has approved and put forward? And as a follow-up, is that something that we could just make the decision, this body, or is it something that does have to go before the public?
Commissioner Anderson, I can answer one piece. They did go on the November ballot on those, for, for those counties, but I'll let County Attorney Joyce speak to this a little bit here.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioner Anderson, yeah, it's required by the legislation to have a vote of the people.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chief, oh my God, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I know that this is going, well, hopefully will go to the vote and all of that. As far as, like, I saw an article from the Missoulian, and I actually got a call from constituent today. Will we pursue further ordinances as far as, like, includes being at least 500 feet from other such businesses, have no glassed storefronts, or anything like that? Would that be sent out to the vote, or would that just be us to put an ordinance together?
Commissioner Thatcher, I'll refer this back to County Attorney Joyce, but I believe that that would be done with this body.
Yes, Mr. Chief Executive, obviously, the vote has to happen first, and if it was passed, then the council could consider additional regulations.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Thanks, Ily.
Do you have a follow-up? Okay. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You know, maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse, but how would, on these taxes, on these two different marijuanas, how would the tax be calculated? You know, how, what would the kind of formula would be used?
Well, County, I'm sorry, yeah, Commissioner Sorge, we have the ability to tax us up to 3% locally. That's, that's what we're looking at. I think that we should fully exercise that, that ability here. That would be my recommendation to do that, you know, but, but this commission could choose to, to reduce that if they chose to. Any other questions of Commissioners? Commissioner Reardon.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. My question is, is, I seen this in the newspaper, the article, and I think it's a, a great deal that we're going to have at least some money coming off this proposed business dealings. And I, I think that, I don't know where this would fit in, is the fact, and that with this money, I don't know, is that going to be part of the ordinance after, how it's going to be spent, or would that be on the ballot?
Commissioner Reardon, I, I believe that we as a body, and we could direct this, and it would be my intent that we would use this for, as I said, mental health, addiction prevention, things that we, we are already seeing, that we need the support of, and that's where my direction would be as a Chief Executive, to support those, that programming, and this gives us an opportunity to, to support some positions and stuff that, that we desperately need in Boot Silver Bow. Follow-up, Commissioner Reardon.
I guess where I'm going with this is, is basically, you know, we always talk about enforcement here, and I know that you're big on that also, and I like what you're going to do about, you know, helping other entities out dealing with the drug problem. But in visiting with some of the people and that I represent, the biggest thing, and, you know, we're more or less in the rougher part of town and all that, was would they would like to see at least some of this money go toward putting more boots on the ground from law enforcement. And that was, I guess, the basis of my question, is hopefully we can get at least a couple more police officers out there to help out.
Commissioner Reardon, you know, it would be great. We really don't know the amount of revenue we're going to get. I know that Missoula anticipated they would have somewhere in the range of $700,000 that they anticipated they would do. If you divide that into, into a third, which is probably about where we're at with Boot Silver Bow, that puts us into possibly around $200,000 that we would get that. To be able to, to put more police officers in there, that's, that's, that's a pretty significant investment. I'm not saying that that's not something that we could do, and we can, we will make a decision on how that's going to be used. I think that, you know, I won't speak for Sheriff Lester, but I know that the support I have in case management type people that can, can react and, and work with people rather than arrest them and, and deal with them a little bit. arrest them and deal with them a little bit, I think that that's, we'd like to see a preventative piece in the local government here, and so that's, that would be my goal.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I too have heard from other people saying that medical marijuana should probably be left out of this, you know, I've heard because it's already taxed from the state. So I guess my question, because it's going to go on the ballot, is it can be two separate ballot questions? You know, would they be able to vote on one and then the other? Is that what you're thinking?
Commissioner Sorge, that is the intent, that both of these would go to the voters to be able to pick on both of those. And just so you know, that the state will tax recreational marijuana at 20%, and we have the option of doing 3%. Medical marijuana is taxed at 4%, and we have the option of taxing it up to 3% as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Are we in line to get it on the ballot for June? Is that possible?
Commissioner O'Neil, that is, that's the intent of us starting this right now, so that we're able to go through the public hearing process, get the ballot language, everything ready, so that it can be put onto the June issue, or June ballot. That's, we, you know, this came about so quick, and we really didn't know a lot about the medical marijuana and what the state was going to outline there, so it was a little tough to get that on to the November ballot. A couple, as we said, three counties did, but we will be in position to have it on the June ballot. Any other questions? Seeing none. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. So I guess, I guess I have one more question before I make a motion here. So it sounds like we shouldn't hold this, and we should, we should act upon it.
Are you asking me?
Sub-Commissioner Fredrickson, County Attorney Joyce.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fredrickson, yeah, the process would be for us to introduce a resolution of intent, and then schedule a public hearing. And then if that resolution of intent passed, then to go forward with the resolution, to place it on the ballot, and the clerk and recorder's office indicated they would need that information in order to have their ballot prepared by early March. So in order to get through two different resolutions in a public hearing, it's kind of imperative that we start the process.
Thank you. So with that, I'll make a motion to concur with the Chief Executive's request for a resolution of intent to prepare for the purpose of having a ballot issue on imposing a local option for marijuana excise tax.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur and place on file. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to... Got to go back now. To section 3, Ordinances and Resolutions induced to Judiciary, we have one resolution number 2021-54. Did I miss something?
There was one communication added to the agenda.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we have an addition of, my fault, I thought we put it at the bottom of that. We have an addition of a suspension of the rules, so we got to follow the suspension of the rules. Am I correct? Again here? Okay. Okay. So we have communication number 2021-578, which is communication from Chief Water Opera, Jim King requesting the Council Commissioners authorize Chief Executive to sign a memorandum, or Montana Department Natural Resources Council, DNRC, Hazards Fuel Reduction Grant, and Accompanying Professional Services Agreement with Grayback Forestry Incorporated. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I move to place communication, to concur and place communication 2021-578 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur and place on file. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Thank you for keeping me in line, County Attorney Joyce. Moving on to section 3, Ordinances and Resolutions for Induction to Judiciary, we have resolution number 2021-54. Note that it will go to judiciary. Moving on to section 4, Ordinances and Resolutions for Final Reading. Clerk, can you please read the caption?
Council Bill number 2021-07, ordinance number 2021-07. Our ordinance amending section 17060030 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, which section adopted the zoning map of the Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for a change to the official zoning district map by rezoning approximately 16.5 acres from R1, single-family residence, and R2, two-family residence, to R3, multifamily residence, commonly located between Grand Avenue and Argyle Street, east of Garfield Street, and the west of Continental Drive, located in the Wilson Park and northern Pacific conditions. Section 20, Township 3 North, Range 7 West of the PMM of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I move to place Council Bill number 2021-07, ordinance number 2021-07, on final reading and past having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move Council Bill number 2021-07 and ordinance number 2021-07 on final reading. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? I think we're missing, Commissioner Oden. There we go. Would anyone like to change the vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eight yay, two nay.
Eight yay, two nay. Motion passes. Moving on to any public comment on any public matter not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. I'll refer Commissioners to the calendar of events. Please note the dates of those. And then I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.